All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can you please call the row?
Trustee Sanchez.
Present.
Trustee Reyes Plummer.
Here.
Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Lyford. Trustee Peppers.
Yeah.
Trustee Brandon.
Here.
Mayor Booker.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, for the invocation, for the Pledge of Allegiance, can we have Big Pepp, Trustee Peppers, give us an open invocation?
The heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, and we give thanks. Thanks, Lord, for life. Thanks, Lord, for opportunities for us to make a difference. Thanks, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for all our family and our well-being. Lord, we come before you today, and we ask for the strength, Lord. Give us the strength and the vision to represent our village, represent our family in a shining light, Lord. And also, we ask for a special prayer for Trustee Lyford and his family as they go through some struggles right now, Lord. Be kind to his heart, be kind to his family, and heal his wife, Lord. In Jesus's name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right.
My gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Oaths, reports, proclamations, and announcements, and appointments, none. Finance management report. None. Do you have any public comment?
You skipped the minutes.
Mayor.
Our fault. Let me go back. Five. Approval of committee of the whole minutes from the village board meeting of the Board of Trustees on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Motion to approve by Trustee Brandon, seconded by Trustee Reyes Plummer. Are there any questions? Please call the row.
Trustee Sanchez. Trustee Sanchez.
Aye.
Trustee Reyes Plummer.
Aye.
Trustee Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Lyford. Trustee Peppers.
Aye.
Trustee Brandon.
Aye.
And Mayor Booker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Director Satchel, did you have something for the financial management report?
I do. I emailed it out to you guys, but I do have it, and it's been placed on the, on the website for the, for the residents as well. I know that we're already going over the amendment, but I did want to just give a report for December. I'm sorry, let me put my camera on. Okay, so I did want to give my December's report as well, which does all lead into the amendment that we've already began to discuss. So everything is pretty much the same. We're at sixty-seven percent of our budget, and I really just wanted to make note that if you look at the December financials for that period, we're showing a negative, and that's because I've already began to reclass and move some things out of the corporate fund, namely the ARPA funding, which was the 1.75 million. So with that and a couple others, it's just having that December reflect a negative balance. So that was the, the main thing that I did want to point out. The rest of it is, you know, is in my, is in my cover memo, along with the reports for the state shared revenue and then the report for December.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Eight. Do we have any public comment? All right. So we'll go to nine. Village President's reports and items. So I'll just leave the discussion over to Village Manager. But before I do, just want to showcase a couple of things going on with the Park District, because I know a lot of times the question is asked, what do they have going on? So just want to do a quick showcase of a few things that have been going on with them in regards to programming, not necessarily the feel-good events, but actual programming that's been taking place at the Park District. So looking at programming that's been taking place at the Park District, they have now four programs going on over at the 200 Building that is boxing, basketball fundamentals, and basketball or conditioning for youth. And then they also still have the partnership with School District 89. So those programs are up and running right now. You also see in collaboration, the Alpha Lights program or Alpha Quest program is taking place. Teen Zone happens every other Friday at the Lyford Center. You still, as you can see in the photos, have different activities going on at the 200 Building and the gym, and we also are working with the West Suburban Action Project with PASO. I'll talk about that a little bit more. The seniors programming will kick back off this month on the third Wednesday, and that's from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. So that programming that normally happens every Wednesday, as we're dealing with the winter season, and as we're coming back from the surge in the pandemic, it's only going to be in February and March on the third Wednesday, and then in April, it'll go back to its full swing of every week. So they have registration going on right now for, they're doing a partnership with the Chicago in regards to Little T's baseball program. They also will have a White Sox basketball youth program that they're taking registration for right now, the early registration for both of those is in place. The junior growers program is a two different level program for those third grade to eighth grade. So again, you can go to the Maywood Park District website and sign up for those items as well. They have, right now, they're signing up people for a fitness club, so they'll do fitness club on Mondays and Wednesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. They have senior club, again, as I said before, February 16th, March 16th, and then after that, it'll go back to every Wednesday at the Park District. You also have the skills challenge that they do on Saturdays with the various age groups. So they do age groups. Session A is ages four to six, and then seven to 10, and that's on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and then Session B, ages 11 to four, and ages 15 to 17, 11:30 to 1:30. They also have coming up the Daddy Daughter's Dance. So I'm thinking about the Daddy Daughter's Dance. That is on February 10th, and it is $35 for a couple. So again, you can go on the, on the Maywood Park District's website to sign up for those, and these are the links in regards to how the screen looks. Either you go to the Maywood Park District website, or you can go to maywoodpd wreck desk dot com, and that will give you the opportunity to register for the various different activities. And then also, everyone, you just want to make sure that we're marking our calendar for April 30th, as we kick off our summer series of Village Pride Village Wide. And that's just to showcase a few of the different programming activities that are going on at the Park District, because a lot of the time we talk about the events that are going on, but those are all programming activities going on within the Park District. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it back over to our Village Manager to give us a quick update in regards to the discussions that have been taking place in regards to Fred Hampton Aquatic Center, 200 Building, multipurpose building, first through fourth park, and then 1100 South 11th Avenue. You're on mute. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. We met this week again, Director Hall and I from the Park District. First of all, I want to start off by saying that the partnership has went well. You all passed the agreement to allow them to use the 200 Building several months ago, and we haven't had any issues with their, them using the building. They've been very responsible and respectful. So the meeting that we had this week to touch base on the parks, my understanding is that would just require a document by the, our attorney to draft that, to turn that park over. And then for the 200 Building, Mayor, did you have something?
No, I was just saying, you said turnover of management of the park, not the.
Yes, turnover management of the park. Thank you, Mayor. The 200 Building and 1100 Building, there's an agreement that's already been drafted. They would be looking to expand use, full use of the 200 Building for programming, additional youth programming, senior programming, and to provide some mental health programming as well. So that would just take a tweak to the agreement that you all passed several months ago. That same agreement also includes the 1100 Building. So Director West and I have went over with Director Hall and walked through the building. We have a group that's connected with Loyola, just wanting to do some food, a food co-op type program. And so that agreement, I believe these, all three of these can be ready for next month if the Board doesn't have, you know, any specific issues or anything that, that needs to be addressed. So we already have the 211 and one agreement that we're working under right now. That would simply just be an expansion to give the management of, of the building. Questions there?
Trustee Brandon.
Um, so in this agreement there, there's also discussion pertaining to who, after reading the agreement that was in the attached agenda, it did not appear that there was any conversation with the Y based on proposals that we had with them for previous years and based on what the Park District is requesting in regards to operate the pool. And I believe they asked for a little over a hundred and, a hundred thousand dollars to do that. And so what I was looking for as I was reading it, the feedback that we had left off at in regards to communicating with the Y when it pertains to the pool. And so that's when I was really listening for your, your, your presentation when you were, you're speaking. Do you have any feedback in regards to that?
So I guess I'll.
It was difficult for me to hear him. He's breaking up.
So he's asking in regards to the partnership, looking at a partnership with the YMCA versus doing a partnership with the Maywood Park District. I think the best way to look at that, though, is in looking at the Ozlock grant and in looking at potential funding that's coming from partnerships and conversations with the Park District. I mean, realistically, we will be looking at only having the pool open potentially, because they have to have a company come out and look at it this year only, and then construction start. So realistically, it would just be a management agreement for this one year. Because we're talking about the construction that the Park District will be working with the village to get done with the Illinois Parks and Recreation Association, it doesn't really make sense to utilize the YMCA when the YMCA stopped the partnership based on the issues that are with the current pool.
I may have got a feedback. But to the manager, so the last conversation you have pertaining to this, and that's, and that's why I'm saying in regards to there being a communication gap or the, the, the direction that was given to manager Wes Armstrong was to reach out to the YMCA and to communicate with the Maywood Park District in regards to the agreement that they presented or proposal that they presented, and then to reach back out to the Y. And so that was the last place where we lost, that's why I had to zoom in to this when I was reading the packet going over this, because I was very much interested in what the response was going to be from the manager in regards to the direction that the board engaged. Mayor, you were in agreement in regards to that direction given to Ms. Armstrong in regards to bring back some feedback from a conversation that we had in reference to her assignment, YMCA, and then the Maywood Park District. I hear that's not from manager Armstrong.
Well, let's, if it would serve Trustee Brandon's thought process, if we are all good with the programming that's happening at the 200 Building with the 1100 Building, and then coming up with the management agreement with the park, not the pool, so that they can continue the programming that they're doing, and so that they can deal with some time-sensitive grant funding that the Provisal Partners for Health has in regards to getting the 1100 Building up to par, and for them to start with their registrations and everything for the first and fourth, if we're able to move forward with the 200 Building, first and fourth park, and the 1100 Building for a management agreement, not a turnover, and then we can come, we can do that, and that could be done at the next board meeting, and then for the Fred Hampton Pool, we could just put that on the calendar next month in March.
Mayor.
Trustee Brandon.
Yeah, so in regards to the park that's in some these grounds as well.
First and fourth.
Um, first and fourth. So there's always been a stance in regards to turning over management or anything of that nature of that particular park. And the reason being, even before, when we're talking about turning over all, all of the parks to the Park District, first and fourth was never incorporated in that simply because of it's the grounds that our police department sits on. So we've always, from a safety standpoint and the oversight standpoint, wanted to always have management over this particular park. From that aspect, and I think it, it still makes sense, it still resonates with me today in regards to the village of Maywood, keeping control and management over the park that sits on these grounds where we are located now. So I, I, I would be on board with the, the other items, but in regards to having them manage or provide any oversight over this particular park, for those reasons, which I just mentioned, I don't think it would be an investment to the village.
Okay. So I will say, in thinking about the thought process, they had a partnership agreement with the White Sox to do Little League, which would be at first through fourth park. They're already working with the Dog Pound in regards to football activities for the summer. Realistically, they, they would need to work with the management aspect of it, because we don't want the village to go back to renting space out that's park and recreation space. I would say that the agreement could most certainly be drafted of management of the green space of the park, and then we have that language drafted in a memo or within the agreement. Am I correct, Attorney Jurisick? Attorney Jurisick?
Yes, we can limit the use agreement to just the park area and exclude the police station.
So would that take care of your thought process?
Uh, no, I, I would go even further in regards to that. It would be, um, the areas which you just described, but the type of activities they would be participating in, which are the baseball field. Now, I don't even know.
Football wouldn't be on baseball.
Sorry?
Football wouldn't be on baseball fields. It's really, it's really trusting for them to manage green space recreational activity and us not going to renting of facilities, checking of insurances, doing the background checks of the organizations that are coming through, because realistically, these were things that were not happening in the village when we were renting, when we were handling the renting. We didn't do the background checks that the Park District does, and they do that in accordance with the Illinois Association of Park and Recreation and the Illinois Association of Park Districts. We weren't checking the insurance. We weren't checking the events. I mean, this is something that, from a management standpoint, we're not turning over any land. It's them managing the green space.
Yeah, and, and I will stick to the point of, um, the, the baseball, the baseball fields, but other than that, that would, that would be it. The baseball fields, any other spaces I would keep, um, I guess. And, you know, to me, and you, you mentioned all of the programs, I think, in the packet, all, all, all we see in the picture that was displayed up here, and the packet which had like the pictures on it. So I didn't see, was that part of like this, uh, the voyage packet, like the list of programs that they were offering?
No, they sent me the flyers yesterday.
So. So, so, okay.
But, but again, the, the packet wasn't the presentation. The packet were the agreements.
Right, so.
So the, the pre, the presentation was to lead into the agreement conversation, but.
I totally understand. But, you know, for, for me, did you mention a whole lot of programs? And so I would like to know how, you know, like I stated before, how do you have the, the, their current building? I know they're, it's 200 building, but the current building that, that they are having, what actually, like you just mentioned, those programs, which was, which were not, not part of the packet that you just read off. So that was, you know, just information that you had. Um, I would like to see that and be able to really look at, you know, what that capacity means far in regards to programs. You just read a, uh, this program that. I didn't know anything about, do about this program that they offer here. That was pretty much it. But yeah, I, I would like to get that list which you just read off of, so that we're all on the same page and the direction we're going to. And again, my stance on the property that this, uh, police station sits on, it would be specific to the, the baseball fields. And that would be, you know, that would be it. But before that, you need to explain, Mayor, the, the list that you just read off of, as far as like the list of programs, and, you know, and what for me to, want to move forward with taking this to a, a action meeting, which would be our next meeting, I would need, you know, take a look at that. We don't have any other information.
Well, um, the Park District did give the invite, and we talked about it in November, where the Park District Executive Director did go over all of the programs. Every flyer that I just mentioned is currently on their website, and then if you go to click on the program that I showed, it shows every activity, where to sign up for, how to register and enroll. So that's, that's something that you can just click on the Maywood Park District website and be able to view, and then be able to view the registration for each of the activities as well.
But you know what I'm saying.
I got you. Um, so what we, I got you.
You know, they, I appreciate you for.
Well, she, well, that was the thing. They did invite to present. So, okay, we're not going to do, let's, let's not do, at the Park District, yes, they did.
No, no, no. They, they requested something from this body, right? They could come in front of this body to request whatever it is they're requesting. We're not going to go to them or something, they would request.
It was a community, it was a community meeting. It doesn't have to be a board meeting. They literally were giving a community. But I got you. I understand what you're saying. So realistically, we can put the 200 Building on the 15th for a vote. We can put the 1100 Building on the 15th for the, for a vote, and then for first through fourth, and the pool will go ahead and wait for, to see what the YMCA would want to do as a one-year contract before construction. And then first through fourth, I guess my question is for the rest of the board members, is this a one trustee issue in regards to management of the green space of first through fourth? Because if it is just the one, then I would still move forward with that to be on the 15th, but I'm not quite sure. I mean, if there's, if there's no other objection, everyone is entitled to objection, but if there's no other objection, we'll move forward with the first and fourth as well, because again, these are programs that are being registered for right now, and we're getting the information out right now. And again, we should not need to manage park and recreation if we have a up and running park district, which is what has been lacking in this community for quite some time.
Uh, Mayor.
Trustee Jones.
Do you know, i- is the Park District planning on attending the meeting on the 15th? I just, so, you know, we can just kind of hear from them, if, if, or just kind of invite their board or whatever, because I, I, it would be great to kind of be able to see high level, just kind of what, we, we have talked, but it, it feels a little piece, kind of piecemeal. It'd be great to just kind of hear, you know, what, like, which direction they're going in. It's been a lot going on over the past two years, just with, with the parks that they're absorbing in general, and them potentially managing the pool and all this other green space. It would be good to see, you know, you know, how are they doing in terms of managing all that, and, you know, and how they're embracing all that. But as far as the first through, well, actually, I have two questions regarding the, these two items. So the pool, so the, the idea is, and, and who's kind of driving the thought process of opening a pool and then closing it to repair? Like, where, where did that come from? I haven't really heard that, like, like, so, so, so that's that. I want to know, is that a, is that a, like, is that administrative decision, engineering, or what have you? Because I'm kind of curious. I know we have some significant funds out there that were related to fixing the pools. I'm, I'm kind of curious, well, don't we fix it and then have it open indefinitely, you know, indefinitely versus open, close, open, close? But that's been the trend for many years. So that's my first question. And then my second question would be, as far as the park is concerned, I don't have a big issue with the, like, the baseball diamond and so forth, but I am kind of curious. When you say the green space, I know, like, that kind of gets into, like, library territory. There's a park back, you know, park back there. I guess I'm just kind of making sure that whole area, I go, I'm, I'm just making sure I'm, I'm just kind of understanding. Is it just, it's literally, is it just the baseball field, like Trustee Brandon was saying, or what, what other greens? It's like, where we have the Maywood Fest at, like, can we, like, when we say greens, like, all the grass on this, I'm just, just to clarify that, but yeah, but that's it.
So I think it's very easy to get the Park District to come and do a quick presentation before we do the, the vote on the 15th in regards to everything that they have going on, where they were, where they are today. In regards to first and fourth, it's not the library. We're focused specifically on green space, no building structures or anything like that. So where they would be doing football practice would be in the green space, where if they say did a movie night in the park, where they've done the movie nights in a park at, like, 10th Park, at Central Park, they did, they're looking at doing a series of movie nights. Instead of having the movie night at two or three locations, they're looking at doing a movie night at, on the various different parks. So like, they would manage that. Music in the parks. They talked something about a jumpy house, make, like a jumpy house mega fest thing. Realistically, it's, it's them managing the green space. It's, it's the football field area where the kids would be running and, and training. It would be where we have the Maywood Fest at, that they're in partnership with us to do. It would be the, the basket, the baseball mounds, but they can most certainly present on all of that at the 15th meeting, so that we can get some clarity. Then the, for the pool aspect, the conversation of opening the pool this year is ongoing. Again, it still would be pending, looking at the pool. We, we know before, what was it, two years ago when it was open, we did, we were able to fill it last year, but because of restraints in regards to COVID and staffing, we didn't open it. But realistically, the Ozlock grant has been extended, so we're not required and not under that deadline. So since the pool has been closed for two years, looking at the feasibility of reopening the pool for one year, then going into the construction, it's a thought process, but again, that would have to go into inspection and seeing if that's even plausible. But if we are going to do that, we need to actually look at posting the positions for lifeguards, because you already have, like, the Memorial Park District and Forest Park and all of them already posted for the lifeguards. So pending the inspection and pending the feasibility of being able to do it, thinking it would be great to do it, because we've been closed for two years from the pool, and then having that extension by the Ozlock funding to be able to do the work next year, or do, and do other work, then that's a thought process as well. But we could definitely get them to come and present on that. Did anybody have anything else? All right, so.
Okay, from manager Wells Armstrong, this is not really related, this is what. Master Armstrong, has the Park District been in contact with you in regards to what we set in place with them as far as transferring the parks this year to them, and making sure that everything was in place as far as, you know, them having, they're due diligence to have someone to come out to evaluate or survey the parks. We had a meeting with the Park District, along with Senator Lyford being at the table. Have they provided any updates to you in regards to where, where they're at in that process of having that survey done or that assessment done of all of the parks that we're planning to transfer over there to them? Because we're now phase one of the proposal or the turnover phase, and I haven't heard any feedback in regards to that yet. And so that's another concern of mine, is that we're putting a whole lot of stuff in the pot, and we haven't even finished, like, or haven't even put all the ingredients or purchased all the ingredients that could this meal yet, or to be able to help, help me, I mean, be able to move forward in a clear manner, I should say, in regards to anything else. So I, my concern is where we at with that as well, because the village is, it has made a commitment, a financial commitment to the Park District, that once they had the survey done, that we were going to contribute up to a hundred thousand dollars in the first phase, which happened this year, and then another hundred thousand, or up to another hundred thousand dollars. And then another hundred thousand dollars or up to another hundred thousand dollars. And the second thing, which will happen next year. So I haven't heard any, um, conversation as far as that is concerned. There's a lot of moving pieces here, but we haven't even really moved forward in a clear manner in regards to what we already. Even had on the table with the park. I haven't seen any records or any update statuses or anything to that nature. Pretending to what's already on the table and what the direction was already supposed to move in. With the park, have you heard anything from the executive department?
Thank you, trustee Brandon.
Trustee, I mean, manager Wells Armstrong.
Yes. Yes, mayor, sorry. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, trustee Brandon for that question. Um, I, as I stated, met her with her, um, this week and had a conversation. I've asked her to send over documents in writing to me. So at this time, in this moment, no, I do not have surveys or assessment reports. But I have requested documents, um, to be sent over to me. And, excuse me. Um, in regard to the pool, I think you, you were asking something about the why you were cutting out and I couldn't clearly understand you. I'll need to, uh, follow up with them. The director at the park district did mention, um, some concerns that she had in regard to. Heating the pool and, uh, you know, a certain temperature that must be maintained. So. That still needs to be worked out. And I asked her what would be needed. Um, to get the pool open this summer and what type of equipment. So I'm waiting for that information to come in writing. So that I can share that with all of you.
And then just to give you some updates. So they did just have the, um, Illinois Park and Recreation Association's. Conference this last weekend downtown. And yes, they have. Met with the assessment team because I actually met the gentleman who works for the Illinois Park and Recreation Association. So we can just have, when they come do the presentation on all the programming and everything, we can have another, a piece of that presentation. Also be on where they are with the updates in regards to the assessments. That's simple.
Mayor.
Trust, trustee, trustee Brandon.
Yes, the manager just mentioned something in regards to, um, talking to the park itself. I, I guess what my concern, uh, manager Armstrong will come in. Uh, play is when you, you just communicated that we're talking to the park district as far as like what we need. For the, for to, for the heating of the pool. I, I would think that we will be talking to, I mean. Hancock Engineering or Engineering Center or. As to my understanding, I thought we had put out the contract for the work to be done on the pool or whatever contract.
That was just a liner. That was just for the liner, not for the heating.
Thank you. So yeah, I, I, I would think we would be in contact with like. Our people so that we have an understanding of from our own perspective of what is needed. To make any repairs for to heat the pool versus, you know, having another entity come in to assess the situation. We should know for ourselves. And since we own the pool, it should be something that we know, not ask. Another entity about. It's just my point in regards to that. So I would hope that we can do our own. Research with our own folks to be able to get a clear understanding for ourselves. Of what's happening with it and where we at with completion of the work that was expected to be done. And I thought completed, that was like three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that we had received to make the necessary repairs to. The pool, moving the, um, electrical system, a book from the basement, what flooded was taking place. So I'm looking for some feedback, you know, uh, in, in that now.
Mayor, may I respond?
Um, manager Wells Armstrong.
Thank you. Um, trustee Brandon, this just came up when I a- asked, um, director Hall at the park district. In terms of what the needs were for them to get the pool open this summer. And that was an item that came up. So I asked her if she was aware of what those costs would be. Um, I certainly will confer with our team as I do. I have, as you know, meetings with our department heads every week. And, um, touch base with the engineer as needed. But she just happened to mention this to me this week. And so I inquired. If she knew the cost, so she would be the person managing the pool. If she, um, had some information about the cost of a heater, if that was the direction that was decided to go.
Alright, trustee Jones.
Yeah, I, I think we were, um, and, uh, thank you, mayor. I think we were going that, that direction with, uh, Ms. Wells Armstrong. Um, response in terms of, uh, basically what is the current condition of the pool, like as of today, you know, um. I'm not, yeah, right. And so, um, if we don't know, then I, I, I guess I'd be hoping to get some sort of recommendation. Uh, from staff in terms of what is the best direction to go. Um, so we heard one approach in terms of opening up this year. There's gonna be some sort of. Feasibility done in terms of what that would look like, um, and then to potentially close it for more significant, um. I guess construction. So I guess I would just under, just would have wanted to understand, okay, so what's the condition? What's the scope of? Well, we need to get this pool in one hundred percent full service. Condition. And then what's the approach? Uh, just so we could be transparent with the residents, because ultimately, you know. The residents are people who want to frequent the pool are the ones that, um, need to understand what we're doing. So outside of management, I think we just need to understand, okay, what's the condition and who's going to be responsible? For doing it. What's the timeline? So we can stick to it. So hopefully we can have a grand opening of a pool and, you know, who's managing it will be kind of. Um, second priority, first priority, it needs to be functional. Um, and. Given the size of the grant, I thought the, um, the pool needed significant work. Um, I, I would have, I'm under the impression if it could have been open. It would have been open. So I hope that we couldn't have been operating the pool. This whole time, or I'm hoping that we wouldn't have. Not opened a pool that otherwise could have been operatable, you know, or operational. So my, I'm under the assumption that it isn't. Um, so I'm hoping to get a report from staff about where we are and then, uh, we can make an educated decision, you know, um, from there. Thank you.
Alright, so again, we'll just move the pool on to the Cal for the actual March meeting. But trustee, just be reminded, last year, we were able to reopen the pool. The pool would have been able to reopen. And we did fix some things preliminarily and the pool was filled. The problem was the COVID restrictions. And then the staffing aspect of it, because the repairs that, that were made were made. Before the beginning of the summer. So I think if you recall, the last previous village manager was saying we would have done like a, a smaller season. But this, he wasn't able to get the staffing for it. And then the COVID restrictions. Of when the kids would have had to get out the pool, stay in, stay in the pool and all those things just made it. Even though we were able to have a pool, it just wouldn't have been feasible financially, um, for us to do it with the lack of staffing for, um, the pool. Like that was last year. But definitely we'll get March for the pool as conversation. We'll get the park district to give us a presentation on the fifteenth and then hopefully we could, uh, move forward with everything else. Alright, are there any other, uh, questions in regards to park district management agreement discussion? Alright, so we'll move to, uh, B, discussion on West Suburban Action Project. So again, the reminder, the West Suburban Action Project, uh, called Paso, realistically. Is the conversation that took place when there was requests for more inclusive activities. More inclusive events, more inclusive communication and things such as that that were given. So we've been working with the West Suburban Action Project. They have meetings at the Life for Recreation Center starting this month. Every fourth Wednesday at six PM. We had two community meetings in the, we have one at the end of November and then we had one at the beginning of December. Where they came, they had the community meetings at the Life for Center. As you can see, there was a lot of different things placed on the wall in regards to what the community wanted to see. From a Hispanic engagement standpoint. So they are looking to Paso is based. Their headquarters is based in Merrill's Park, even though they service the entire West Suburban Cook County area all the way into Cicero. What they're going to do now is they have two. Co-chairs of co-leads to manage the village of Maywood that are Maywood residents. And those two will work with the Apostle team in regards to ensuring. ESL classes are made readily available within the community versus them traveling out. They will make sure that their voices are heard for those who are in need of translation. So the two meetings were. Fully in Spanish and, um, I got translated to throughout the entire meeting. So that was a little different for me. But we will continue to work with Paso and I just wanted to give everybody an update. In regards to newsletters, communications, fires, different meetings, uh, making sure that inclusive activity is taking place. That, uh, Paso and the community leaders that have been identified that are residents of the village of Maywood that are volunteering their time to partner and work with Paso. Will be taking the lead on this. So just wanted to share that with everyone to give an update because we did talk about it before. Um, did anybody have any questions in regards to that? Alright, so then the next thing that I wanted to talk about was. The Crisis Management and Public Safety Collaborative Group. So in looking at the crisis management and public safety, you guys see in the board packet what the meetings were. We did host the community meetings at Irving Middle School. We did host the community meetings. At Proviso East High School. We had a data and a survey conducted where now we are all working together. On February the twenty-sixth, which is a Saturday from nine AM to twelve PM. We'll be having a meeting that focuses on the elements of a healthy Maywood. And within those elements of a healthy Maywood, we'll have updates from all of our different taxing bodies and our different involved parties. As to from November, December and January and beyond for the year of twenty twenty-two. What things have taken place, what things have been enacted and then, uh, what things are to come or pending. Based on, uh, various different results. So I'm not gonna go through the overall presentation for you guys. It's in the board packet. And it was what we did. This is just showcasing to you guys what was the presentation within the community meetings. Then, and looking at the aspect of elements of a healthy community, you guys can see. For elements of a healthy community, that is again, as I said, it's an event that takes place. Focusing on twelve different e- elements from healthy equity, resiliency. Um, and looking at this aspect, we'll be working and have been working in partnership with all of our governing taxing bodies and Loyola University. There has been various different researches within Loyola to focus on this. There's also been various different conversations with the different collaboratives. So it's just bringing in all of the communication, focusing on the various different elements of a healthy community. So again. That will be Saturday, February twenty-sixth from nine AM to twelve PM. Um, and that will be at the Maywood Park District at nine twenty-one South Ninth Avenue. With looking at the discussion on economic development, we actually postponed the visits to the various different constructions that are going on. Due to COVID. So that'll be an update given to everybody in March, not for the, not for this Cal. And looking at discussion on the National League of Cities Conference, the conference is upon us. And that is from March fourteenth through the sixteenth. We did identify the funding and will be amending the budget. To get that done. So the question is, so that we can get the packaging together, get the rooms reserved and get the flights booked. The question that I have for everyone is which trustees will be attending the conference? Mayor, I'm sorry, trustee Brandon.
So I was looking at the, um, information, um, that was, um, presented and thinking about the, um. What was presented to us as fiscal accountability and transparency, um, myth. So. It was only what I believe at the amount, um, and manager Wells Armstrong, I mean, I think it was only ten thousand dollars.
For training. Um, manager Rose Armstrong.
Yes, trustee Brandon, I believe the ten thousand you're referencing was the money that I moved from my budget. Um, under the newsletter line item to, um, the, the board's budget for miscellaneous activities. And then I believe we put in thirty or thirty-five thousand in the amendment. That would cover, um, training, professional development, training conferences, travel for the board. Um, Director Satchel.
Yeah, that. That's, you're correct.
Okay.
So again, the question would be for the trustees, which trustees as we're, uh, need to put together the packaging. To make sure that we, uh, get our rooms booked and get the, if we have a group going, the rate will be reduced for registration. So just trying to get a feel, it'll Washington DC from March fourteenth through the sixteenth, which trustees will be going.
I'll be going.
Alright, so trustee Reyes Plummer will be going. Alright, so trustee Brandon is pending.
Uh, I'll be pending as well. I would have to look at my calendar.
Alright, so. Your Jones, you say you pending as well?
Yes, pending, yes.
Trustee Jones is pending. And then trustee peppers.
I'll be pending as well.
Alright, so can we, uh, look at our pendings as soon as possible? So that we could, again, because the rates, the rates change. So if everybody could look at their pendings. And, uh, get with, get with Ms. Banks. Ms. Banks will be handling all the air travel, the booking of the rooms and, um. Accommodations. So if everybody could look at their pendings and let Ms. Banks know, uh, as soon as possible so that we can. Book the, uh, the rate that's available right now for everyone and, and get the package that's based available will be awesome.
There.
Trustee, press trustee center.
You will have my answer by Thursday morning.
Great. Uh, manager Wells Armstrong.
Yes, I believe if five of you go, the sixth person is free for registration. And keep in mind that the National League of Cities is open to all staff. The village is a member, um, city. So that is open to elected officials and staff. Also. The, there's usually an early bird registration. I thought I saw an email on it and it was this week. So mayor, you may want to check that.
Thirty-first.
It was the thirty-first? So you guys missed it by a day. Okay. But if you take, if you register, get five to twelve, the six is free for registration.
Alright, trust, who, who, oh, trustee.
Yeah, you can, uh, you can change my pending to, to, to confirm it.
Great. Alright. So very happy. At least, at least our two new trustees will be able to go. Perfect. Okay, alright, so we will get updates in regards to that. Uh, G, we have discussion, uh, for switching our board meeting. That's in March, from March fifteenth to March twenty-second. So again, it's because the conference will be going on during the board meeting. So the question is, would anybody be opposed to changing the board meeting from March fifteenth? To actually having it held on March twenty-second? Alright, so if nobody would be opposed to that, then we'll just put that in. To change the date of our March board meeting from March fifteenth to March twenty-second. Alright, so now we are at D. Village managers report presentation by Chief Elijah Willis regarding first hundred days and vision for the Maywood Police Department. Take it away, chief.
Well, hey, let me just start off. So good evening, village manager, mayor, board trustees and all the, uh, citizens in attendance. Welcome to my first one hundred days plus as chief police for the village of Maywood.
Wait a minute, chief, can everybody hear you?
Know me, there's any citizens on the line, man, it's Elijah Willis.
Can everyone hear you?
Yes, I can hear him.
So, so I'm gonna give you a brief overview of some of the things that I actually done since I've been here. You know, it's been more than a hundred days of the stuff I've been working on, you do what my predecessor. So the first thing I had to come up with, you know, it was vital for me as a chief police, create our vision and a mission. Statement as we, as well as core values. You know, what to support the direction that I want to see developed in the police department in, in twenty twenty-two. So, in, in my mission statement, I re-bought the last mission, mission statement. So listen to the mayor, the village manager and some of the citizens within the, in the community. You know, if you look at my mission statement, the first thing you. You know, if you look at my mission statement, the first thing it says partnership and service commitment, I think is key. Because it can't be us against them, them against us, it's gotta be, you know, all on one accord. I'm not gonna read, you know, if I slide to you, nothing, so anybody intelligent is nothing like this, so. Uh, my mission statement, you know, what is promoting the safety and security, I think the mayor, you know, you know, harks on this a lot. And I think, you know, every, every mayor harks on this a lot, so that's one of the big things right here, so. No questions? So, my core values, so I just, I just discussed, you know, my mission statement and mine. And my vision plan, so the thing for my core value, and there's a lot of core values there's out there, you know, and everybody knows their core values, you know, what, you know, is the guiding principles. They can dictate, you know, right and wrong behavior for employees and helping them understand. And determine what direction they need to move forward in as we move this village forward, the police department forward, so. As you look, transparency and accountability, I think today, in today's society. I don't think that you can say transpa- transparency without following up with accountability. I think they go hand in hand, and I'm synonymous, I think they go hand in hand, you know, ethical conduct and selfless service. You know, I think selfless service is something that, you know, employees of this village all should take, you know, uh, a heed to. You know, I think the citizens of this village does a lot for us, and I think selfless service is something that, you know, that uh goes hand in hand with everything that I talked about in my core value. These are some of the things that I want, but these are the things that are relative to my vision, that I want to see Maywood Police Department employees, you know, uh, go forward and move forward with. Alright, first and goals, so I just read it, it's vital for me as the village of Maywood Police Chief to establish a mission and vision. Future and fairly familiar with operation issue, concern of the village of Maywood, and public safety. And other priorities of the community, following is used as a baseline guide to helping achieve the five goals. Within the first hundred days of my ten years chief. So I had to come up with five goals, I could've came up with a lot more, but I think that these five goals, uh. Encum is what I was thinking about in reference to how I'm gonna look at it, so the biggest things was resources, equipment, and train, you know, for our police department. Any questions on this? My first goal. A sort of strong vision toward the future and further define the department mission, vision, and core value statements. So in this one here, I just talked about the, the mission and the uh, the vision and what's the core value. One thing I'm discussing on this slide here is the develop, the development of a teaching and succession plan for the police department. You know, succession plan is critical leadership tool for ensuring our agency organizational growth is continuity by eliminating substantial gaps. And I had institutional memory, knowledge, and leadership through strategic planning, basically for personnel. So uh, I had a conversation with the village manager, one of the things that I was doing at the same time I was doing this, I was working. You know, working it together, I was putting my annual report together. Well, some of the stuff you want to see here, everybody gonna see on my annual report, it's gonna be a bit more defined when I talk about that. So the one thing that I had to do, I had to revise our org chart. I had to look at the org chart and see where we was at as far as what we was losing, what we had in place, and what could we do to move forward. So I made, I made severe promotion, uh, moved some uh individuals within the department that I thought that were gonna be better fit. For the department as we move forward, so. With all that being said, I had revised org chart as I stated, and moved these, and made these movements for these personnel, not department as we move forward. And at the end of this, uh, I just say this upfront, so at the end of this presentation, I talked about a lot of other stuff, because I'm working, I'm working so many things. It's, it's crazy, but it's a lot of stuff that I'm working at one time, so. Go to, yeah, as much information possible about people in operation of the police department, you know, to serve. So. I had the opportunity to meet with all my police officers, as well as the civilians within the police department. And the three questions that I asked everybody was, what are we doing well, what can we do better as a team, anything else they can, they would like to contribute to help the department. Everybody, and just like, you know, people are, you know, got some good answers, got some bad answers, but at the same time, I think our majority of the answers was, you know, was positive in nature. As we move this police department together, uh, I think the, the morale has changed, I'm not gonna say because of me, but. I think the morale has changed, and I think that the personnel within the police department are looking forward to coming to work, you know, in this, you know, this pandemic. Pandemic era, uh. Meeting with the community leaders, this is, this is a, this is a task here, because of COVID, you know, I'm doing my best. Uh, I met a lot of individuals via the internet. I haven't met a lot of people in person per se, but I met and know a lot of people who deserve. Like calls that I've been on, but I'm looking forward to meeting these individuals in the few days to come. Yeah, open line of communication with the chief, the chief, you know, Brono, where we actually working on a program that we can bring a best program where we have to talk about. Some of the things in reference to certain fires, so we just had arson, I mean, we had a fire on ten thousand last year. And uh, I think with this best program, we're gonna look and see if anybody that's in the village of Maywood that's. Any potential arsonist that we can actually look at and then go from there, so. And establish a working relationship with the village of Maywood directors. Village manager had COVID, the department needs every once, every once, and I think the fourth, I have to go with these directors. You know what, uh, says is, says enough right there, so. I look forward to each director meeting and sharing information, and I think the team that we have, that you have established and put together, and what does align. Goal three, great opportunity to hear from the residents, business owners, and community groups of the village, and establish, and establish a cooperative partnership. As I stated before, I need to use my separate way to not be able to join association, you know, even though I've done it, you know, with via internet. I've been trying to do it, you know, in person as much as I can, uh, walk talk, you know what, the reason I put this is, you know, I don't wanna be a chief that. Don't have, I wanna support what I say, not with just word, but with actions. Uh, I have members of business leaders that discuss concerns and issues involving their businesses successfully with the village, so. Ms. Smith from community development, she sends out uh notices of businesses that's open within the village. You know, I'll make it a point with those people, business owners, and discuss any issue that they might possibly have, and try to help them uh, help as best we can. Also too, what I do too, so I have my officers, and I do this at the public safety unit on, on a monthly basis. I have the officers go get out and they talk to the business owner. Uh, one thing is that we, we always hear that uh. Nobody knows police officers within the town, so, but uh, I have the officers get out and talk to the business owners, so they had no, what the song we are working. And what offices I work in any, uh, any percent. Conduct a review, uh, for one, yeah. Coffee with, coffee lunch with chief events, this is something that I like right here, so. So we haven't had the opportunity to publish with the chief yet, that's something I'm looking forward to, like at my CIL, if you're working with that, but I have had the opportunity. To visit the schools and we had lunch with kids, I actually have a motivational speech for the kids. At Irving School, we actually went to Washington School and had a conversation with the kids over there. Uh, this past December, we had a shop with the cops, I think that turned out real well. Where we had kids on the community on outreach within the village of Maywood, where we, we raised money. For these kids and they're allowed to go to Walmart and shop till they drop several hundred dollars, if they wanted to buy, I think that was a pretty good event there. So I'm looking to do more, more of this in the days to come. Meet with the school districts, two oh nine and eighty-nine. This is something that's close in, close in here tomorrow, so. I met with district two oh nine as well as eighty-nine in reference to yesterday, so, and this is, this is, this was. Uh, something that I think that we need to do to deactivate the school resource officer, uh, I wanna say district two oh nine actually has a MOA. Or MOU on the table, I embedded the village attorney, I think, I had to send it back and get a couple more things worked out. Eighty-nine is actually on board with doing the same thing, uh, I had a couple officers put in that wanted to actually do it. Other stuff that would be village manager in the days to come, who those officers will be, and I look forward to getting that program off the ground, getting it off the ground and moving. Establishing and the benefits of establishing the homeland security, uh, this is something that was, that my predecessor, but, you know, what, did the hard work of. Myself and my staff as well, village manager, you know, we had the homeland security off the ground, and I look forward to working with uh chief science. The homeland director, uh, as we move forward, you know, he's establishing the uh, I think they changed the name of the bank a little bit, Wintrust.
Proviso Community Bank, still a Wintrust.
So, I look forward to working with him, I think he's gonna be, uh, he's gonna be beneficial, you know, he's gonna be a. Uh, somewhat of a relief for the village, I mean, for the police department, as far as from my officers, if you get up and running. Goal four, review all written department policy, the procedures in the days if necessary, for exceptional right and certain compliance. Also renew the department hierarchy structure, in terms of reorganization, the reorganization may take pretty big advantage of this kind of personnel. And future means of, as I said earlier, you know what, I re, I revised the work chart, uh, you'll probably see this again when I talk about this in the uh. My annual report, so what we had, what we had in place, we had for a couple of years, you know, we have a, we have a. We have a policy, we have a policy, we have an outdated policy. My predecessor came up with a new way of updating our policy, and I'm actually working with my staff right now to update the policy that we have. Something that we have for the last five years, uh, I think once we get this up and running, I think this is gonna be beneficial to the village as far as liability, you know. Uh, liability claims in the day, um. Uh, our job descriptions, uh, I'm actually uh in the process of working with HR and with, with the new HR personnel. Where the issue may be when they come on board and updating all our job descriptions, and bringing them up to form, maybe they need to the twentieth century. So we, we got a little, a little outdated, but I think that uh, well, when they get on board, that'd be uh, beneficial, helping with that. So for you don't know, so we, flowing some non-lethal as well as lethal weapons, so I know it says, AR fifteen are not. So AR fifteens are, are our long guns, so we have some AR fifteens that we have for a long time. So this is some of the things that the officers talked about in uh, in the meeting with the village manager, that, you know, we had some of this equipment, but we weren't utilizing. So I actually got this equipment up and running, and actually got it out there on the street, our AR fifteen, you know, where this, this magic firepower was some of the uh. Firepower that's out here, some of the uh, some of our bad boys and girls, what they have. Uh, we actually uh, have a MOA when we wanna have, you know, just some training with the tasers, uh, I was able, I was able to secure grants. About some additional tasers, you know, we have a program in the ass, and we have, we are, we're going to Cook County. County's gonna train the department for free, it's gonna cost to the village as we move forward. So these I quit, this is some of the equipment that the village, I think the village would allow us to get this equipment. And I think in the days to come, this one, you know, it's gonna prove, it's gonna be a big morale booster for the officers as we move forward. Goal five. Assess and evaluate the village's public safety strength and weakness, so to develop strategies built on strength and weakness. So what you see on the board right now is, what, what, what we use as police department is to. Is a, is a, is a analytic tool that can help analyze, to show what's working best right now. And what we, and what are we doing right and what are we doing wrong, so. And I, if I go through the department, one of the things that I was, so I said, okay, well, our strengths, really oriented police. I believe that we, with the public safety program that we have in place, I think we have a pretty good, uh, do it needs some work, yes. So adequate, ad- adequate equipment, you know, and I say adequate because I still think we need some more equipment, I think that the strength, I think there's still a good strength. Adequate training, we go through a lot of training, like, we gotta make sure that we stay up on top of our training, support from the community. You know, since I've been here for twenty years, and this, this community has supported me and officers of this department since I've been here, and I have nothing to say bad about that. Uh, professional civilian support staff, uh. Can't say enough about the support staff, the civilians that's down there, I think they do a phenomenal job, and that's the reason I call them peer support. So the peer support programs are programs that the officers put in place downstairs to, to discuss some of the ongoing issues. Personal issues that's going on in a lifestyle, so this is something that the village has allowed, and with uh, peer support, I think it speaks volumes. As well as E and P program that's out there. Weaknesses, additional equipment that's needed, or they say, well, I say adequate on strength, but still, you know, we always need some additional equipment. Communication within the department, you know, that's always, that's always gonna be a weak, you know, we have to enhance on better communication. Our manpower shortages, you know, that's something that's being addressed. Opportunities, increased recruitment of minorities and women, you know, within our fold, increased community partnership. And I think once we come out of this COVID pandemic, which we in, I think the partnership uh will increase at that time. Increase in-service training, so what we have to do, we have to get back to some of the things that we used to do to make our officers, you know, with the best of what they do. So uh, we're gonna get back to some of the in-service training, what we did, what we used to have once a week, or twice every, every once by week. I mean, once by week, in reference to some of the in-service training, to make sure that officers are far away in this, uh, advance within the department, advance. We're a small apartment, so a lot of people say, well, you can't, but it's not so much of you advancing, it's making sure that you put people in the right place at the right time. And giving officers and employees the opportunity to see other things, what they've been doing for the last twenty or thirty years. And a war program, I think that this war program, I, I have one of my sergeants come over and program, you will see this in the days to come. And this is, this is, it's taking store on, we, uh. He came up with a program, I think we're gonna do, we're gonna do this big here. I think this is a little big morale booster uh for the department, uh, you see a lot of departments where they, they walk around with their uh. With their dress uniform on, they had all the badges and the reds on, maybe it's gonna be part of that program now, so we're gonna be doing that, so that's something you're gonna see in the days to come. Uh, threats, public sentiments, you know, the, the theme area, we gotta change that, we gotta change the narrative, bottom line. The media, same thing, changing narrative, instead of saying bad thing, what can they say good about the village of Maywood, Ms. PD. The COVID nineteen pandemic, what can I say about, we in it, it's the unknown, what we're dealing with, and budget restrictions. So, what I, what I'll bring up to your attention, rest to some additional notes, you know, since I've been in here, since I've been the chief, you know what, I have. I was able to secure sixty radios, which is in the process of the village order that we can have due to the current NAC seventeen going away. I wanna thank the board and the village manager for allowing us to get these radios, this is, this is another big morale booster for the police officers, because. If we wasn't able to secure each radio, we would've been, we'd have been in the dark, so what you didn't know it. We were, we're the last ones to secure them, but fortunately we in the process of getting them. Um, like I said, I told you earlier, we bought some additional tasers with rent money, we was awarded bringing our account to nine. When, which we have Cook County provides some free training for the D officers, we also have training set up, my main training, that was also brought with uh, rent money. We in a process of updating our outdated two thousand and six policy, the Lexo, which will be presented for approval within about the next three to four months. Uh, we was awarded two grants, one being a college grant for five hundred thousand, uh, for hiring or for new officers. And another grant for body worn cameras for thirty-five thousand, I think that grant for thirty-five thousand is a shared grant, I think we have to spend the cost there. And another grant for body worn cameras for thirty five thousand, I think that grant for thirty five thousand is a shared grant, I think we have to split the cost there. Uh, I met with the state's attorney, you know, Jose Villarreal, he is the, he is state's attorney for fourth history. And I met with him about a week ago and some of the things that we talked about, or some of the arrests that we made. In reference to some of the uh, like carjacking. What can we expect from the village of Maywood Police Department, the village itself in reference to some of the individuals that were both in jail? And trustee Brandon was talking earlier, buddy got a text from you earlier about a young man that was arrested. In reference to the uh, unfortunate incident that was involved in uh, his, I don't know, paternity. The thing is, we caught this young man, we made his house this morning in Sichuan, Illinois. Uh, fifteen years old, you know, out here uh, doing carjacking in the village of Maywood. We get what you call a ghost gun, a ghost gun is a gun that's, you know, that's not registered, it doesn't have serial number, but he's guns on the internet. And we called him with this, and it's unfortunate out there, nobody turning his though. So the thing is, he's a juvenile, so it's our transfer, he go to court tomorrow morning. Uh, don't know what's gonna happen there, he's gonna get like kind of monitored, you know, but that's where we at, so when I was talking to Mr. Villarreal, this is something that we talked about. Because what we're seeing is that times has changed to the point where, you know, what we, 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 by time we get the paperwork. Before we can even get the paperwork up, the individuals that are released the next day asking for their property back, so. I like I told you before, I have one of my sergeants that have a war program, which has taken the P D back storm and officers are looking forward to its implementation. I established the first police ladder program program with the intent to replace, you know, uh, officers within the current budget. Uh, so looking at that, uh, with a board of five police commission is actually going through the process of interviewing. Uh, some of these, uh, I think we have thirty, thirty five individuals that apply for the village of Maywood to come on board. And we're gonna look at, once that, once that list is established and sitting down with the power to be, and then we'll pull off that list and things on it. I'm also looking at hiring an investigation specialist to assist investigation on some of our cold cases, intent to bring justice to some of our. This will be a non-sworn police personnel who has a ton of experience in investigations to assist and have that third eye on some of our cases. To assist us, to assist our investigation section as we move forward. Participated in several community events such as the top, top of the roof, special listing fundraiser, torch run, shop with a cop, benefits, et cetera. Reactivating, I'm working, I want, looking forward to working with Ms. Hall from the Park District and be establishing, you know, with the Maywood Explorer Program. We also looking at uh, analyzing what's good, or we'll be looking at putting an F L P R, that's something that's gonna be key in the days to come. Where we gonna put our L P Rs, you don't know, the state has came up with two hundred million dollars of the L P Rs on the high two ninety. I wanna say they go, go up to central, so we're looking at, you don't know where we're gonna put ours there, you know, we analyzing what's gonna be a good location for our L P Rs once we get on. Looking forward to re-establishing uh, the block programs, some of the block club programs that's in the village of Maywood, getting them kicked back off and what happens after some of this pandemic is over with. In conclusion, uh, I will provide a summary report to the village manager on implementation and such in relation to my transition plan. This will assist the department in turning the next step, but I should turn my long-term goals and deck my plan for the future and continue to protect the health of the village of Maywood. As it's the last line of defense to save the people of the community. I will continue to be a strong advocate for the men and women that makes up the Maywood Police Department, players to protect and serve the village of Maywood. Any questions?
Trustee Brandon.
One of the things I was looking, what I'm hearing is uh, uh, actual number, uh, so maybe in the next report if you can provide like where we at right now and. Put your thoughts on what we should be and what that number looks like in regards to additional police officers within the, the department. So that's one of the things I was looking for, so like, how many are we behind or where should we be based on that? And I know this is like one of those, those, you know, this is a dollar sign, it's like, is it uh?
So, so.
Those numbers, but I think it's still for us to know, you know, what we should be at to be operating at our maximum versus kind of like what we are today.
Right, man, well, I give, I give, I give you this tip here, so with the, the village manager has allowed us to coincide with the current budget of thirty three officers. We actually have twenty seven, so we six short, so we're looking to hire from our ladder program six to bring us up to the thirty three within the current budget as it stands today. And at that point right there, the wish list will come out, we'll just move it out there. Good question.
Steve, that number is like, you know, it's always put out there, was the exact, was the hard number, what we, what we do, you know, you budget towards the state, right? That should be part of, you know, the, the massive plan to be, be, beef up uh, in the department. And I know at one point we had eight officers on, were scheduled, were on the budget, you know, was taken out of the budget, and so I was gonna make sure that we're doing whatever we need to do. Put ourselves uh, in like better position.
Okay. Like I said, when I do manual report, you know what, this will probably be something I talk about, you probably get some of the stuff I said here in annual, but it'd be more, it'd be more elaborate, but yes, Roger, trust me. Any other questions?
All right, any other trustees? All right, geez, as always. Much appreciated. All right, so we'll go to new business, I'm sorry, trustee, I'm sorry, village attorney reports, none. Trustee committee reports, none. New business, discussion of recommendation only. A, discussion and recommendation of resolution authorizing and approving the execution of the community development block grant program sub-recipient agreement between. The county of Cook and the village of Maywood program year twenty twenty one and twenty first avenue improvements. Harrison Street to Van Buren Street with the covering memo from client Thorpe and Jenkins, right? Everyone sees the cover memo and the information, would there be any questions or anything that would keep this from being put on the omnibus agenda? Okay, if everyone's fine, we'll make sure that this goes on the omnibus agenda for the fifteenth. B, discussion and recommendation of resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement. By and between the village of Maywood and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. For the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of twenty twenty two green infrastructure alley improvements in Maywood, Illinois. Cost sharing for twenty twenty two green infrastructure alley improvements project with the agreement attached as exhibit A. And with the cover memo dated January twenty sixth, twenty twenty two from client Thorpe and Jenkins. Everyone has seen the memo and the data, is there anything that would keep this from going to the omnibus agenda for the February fifteenth board meeting? Or any discussion? All right, C, we'll add those, we'll add B to the omnibus. C, discussion and recommendation of resolution authorizing the approval and execution of an agreement. Between the village of Maywood and Edwin Hancock Engineering Company for furnishing professional engineering services. For the twenty twenty two green infrastructure alley improvements project and for the appropriation of expenditure of M W R D G C. Program funds and general funds to pay for the preliminary and design engineering services and construction engineering services. Related to the project with the amendment attached as exhibit A and with the cover memo dated January twenty sixth, twenty twenty two from client Thorpe and Jenkins, L T D. Is there any discussion or anything that would keep this from going to the omnibus agenda for the February fifteenth meeting? All right, so we'll go ahead and move that to the omnibus agenda for the February fifteenth. Uh, D, this is discussion and recommendation of the law enforcement protocol training sessions, I P M G. Envoys sixty five hundred dollars, two days of law enforcement protocol training to be held in February of twenty twenty two. From the Maywood Police Department Command Staff and Patrol Officers. I'll just say uh, congratulations to chief and village manager Will Armstrong for working to make sure that this is actually a refundable grant, uh, training, so it's sixty five hundred dollars. That is reimbursable, so if you found us some money, that'd be great, all, all the time. Uh, does anybody have any discussion or any questions that would keep this from being added to the omnibus agenda? All right, so we'll go ahead. E, so for E, consideration and recommendation of fiscal year twenty twenty two. C D B G application of project options with cover memo from village engineer dated January twenty sixth, uh, twenty twenty two. So with the C D B G application and project options with the cover memo that everybody has seen. Is there any discussion or anything that anyone would like to um, add that would keep this from being added to the omnibus agenda for the fifteen? All right, so we'll make sure that we go ahead and get this added to the omnibus agenda for February fifteen. So we'll fourteen, old business, nothing. Fifteen, other matters, sixteen for information only. Uh, seventeen for closed, I'm gonna skip seventeen for closed session. Cause we do need to go on a closed meeting session right quick, but we need to adjourn this meeting and then go into a special board meeting so that we can motion on two settlements. Motion to go into a special board meeting by trustee Brandon, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Jones, are there any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez.
Hi.
Trustee Reyes Plummer.
Hi.
Trustee Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Lightford. Trustee Peppers. Trustee Peppers.
Hi.
Trustee Brandon. Trustee Brandon.
He said, he said hi.
Okay, and Mayor Booker.
All right, great, so adjournment from the committee of the whole meeting and opening special board meeting.
At eight twenty four.
At eight twenty four, commencement uh, February one, twenty twenty two, special board meeting of the board of trustees. And we'll call to order, please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
Trustee Reyes Plummer.
Here.
Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Lightford. Trustee Peppers.
Yeah.
Trustee Brandon.
Here.
And Mayor Booker.
All right, uh, here, I'm sorry. Okay, so, are there any public comments in regards to the public board meeting?
No, they're not, no.
Okay, new business, A, motion to settlement agreement, Quentin Danka Beasley and Danka Basketball League, need a motion?
Motion to.
Motion to a group by trustee Jones, second by trustee Sanchez, are there any questions? All right, please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez.
Hi.
Trustee Reyes Plummer.
Hi.
Trustee Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Lightford. Trustee Peppers.
Hi.
Trustee Brandon.
Um.
And Mayor Booker.
Hi.
Motion carry.
B, motion to approve settlement agreement, Wanda Luen Lewis versus the village of Maywood, E T R case number two one zero seven L zero one one zero five six, need a motion? Motion to approve by trustee Brandon, I'll give you a second, second by trustee Jones, are there any questions? All right, please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez.
Hi.
Trustee Reyes Plummer.
Hi.
Trustee Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Lightford. Trustee Peppers. Trustee Brandon. And Mayor Booker.
Hi.
Motion carry.
All right, so we need to uh, close this meeting and go into closed session for a purpose of. Purpose of pending litigation and discussion of employment discipline. So, twenty four B, twenty four C. Oh, I'm sorry, twenty four A, twenty four C.
So we bring the meeting back into our, um, um, regular account meeting first?
I'll move it into June.
So we can, we can.
Well, motion to go into closed meeting session.
All right, so to go in the closed meeting session, we're gonna shut out this meeting and then I will send everybody an email with a new link to go into closed session.
We need a motion first, right?
Yeah, the most.
Okay.
Motion by trustee Brandon.
Second.
Second by trustee Peppers, are there any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez.
Hi.
Trustee Reyes Plummer.
Hi.
Trustee Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Lightford. Trustee Peppers.
Hi.
Trustee Brandon.
Um.
And Mayor Booker.
Hi.
At eight twenty seven.
All right.